I got my notes.
No, he's on the good ones. He's asking us, um, can we stack them? I'm like, no. He's like, no.
Yeah, I shouldn't have voiced them with this, because they're all so rushed.
Yeah, he's back.
They, he must have got all the guys.
Yeah.
Because I see it's gone. But, okay, at six o'clock, I'm going to call the village people's board meeting to order. Please silence all cell phones and refrain from using during the meeting. I'd love for an approval of the agenda.
Go ahead.
Oh, my.
Wow.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Who's second?
Second.
Okay, all five.
Hi.
Both, most curious. Public appearances. Yeah, Sue, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I've got a void till under twelve.
Twelve, okay. Oh. Moving on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I will approve it, except there is an error in the chalaya of the golden fleece. Um, remember, we had a disconnect there. Motion carried six to one, I opposed it, so six, five to one. On the golden fleece, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, fine.
I, it didn't come through, I guess, because we, we had that.
Yeah, no, I can, I will update those minutes.
Okay.
And then also surrender the board, the June financials will be at the next meeting. We have a reading consent agenda accent.
So would that change?
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Would that changes, all in favor, say hi?
Hi.
Both, motion carries. Item five. A consideration.
Sorry, Roger, do we have a second, second? Thank you, Becca.
My fault, we did already.
I, yeah.
I need to call it again.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, all in favor, say hi?
Hi. Hi.
Those, motion carries.
Thank you.
The new business, consideration discussion. Can't tell, I want to get through this. Twenty-five, twenty-six tax collection agreement, page thirty-three.
Yeah, so this is something we see every year from Green County. It's an annual agreement that allows them to collect taxes on behalf of the village. We've been doing this for quite some time. It's a great thing for village staff here, and their green county is great to work with. So, staff recommend approval.
I move to approve the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six tax collection agreement.
Second.
Green County.
Sorry.
Any questions or discussion on this?
It's just what we do.
Yeah, and it's, this way, Green County collects the taxes. We don't have to worry about us collecting the taxes and carrying the ones that don't pay the taxes and things like that. So far, and then if there's three weeks behind, or three years behind, then the county goes after them.
Got it.
So, all in favor, say hi?
Hi.
Hi. Both, motion carries. Item B, consideration discussion, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty capital improvement plan draft, page thirty-seven.
Yeah, so this is another thing that you've been seeing annually. Um, there is a memo on your packet that kind of goes over it for this year. Um, so I did a synopsis, we're really looking at twenty-six through twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty. There are a few projects listed on there, um, that were a little bit later, once you flip into our draft, and that was solely because of the sixty-nine road project. Um, but just to recap a little bit, some of the major changes from last year's approved CIP to this year. Um, we were able to move the village portion of the fire truck. If you remember correctly, we had that split originally between twenty-six and twenty-seven. We were able to move that all into twenty-six. Um, the fire truck is ahead of, of, in production, Jesse, is that correct?
By like a year.
Yeah.
Which is kind of strange.
So their estimate was that, you know, half of twenty-six, half of twenty-seven would, would work. Well, now the fire truck's ahead of schedule. Um, and this avoids the fire department having to take out a loan to pay our portion, and then we have to pay interest, et cetera. So I did work with Ellers, um, and, and worked that into the constraints that the village has, has seen in the past. Um, the other thing that was added was railroad street design added for twenty-seven for the twenty-eight reconstruction. We have the reconstruction on the CIP, but we did not have the design for it. So similar to Eleventh Avenue, where we're designing this year, reconstructing next year. Um, and I think an important thing to know for the board as well, it's really good to have a clear plan and path for the future for the next five years. What we're really approving tonight is the twenty-twenty-six CIP. It allows staff to then budget effectively for next year. Um, the public works garage was budgeted for a whole new building in last year's CIP. It is now budgeted for just a new roof. Um, so that obviously saves some money, and that actually helped allow us to move that fire truck portion back into twenty-six. Um, the downtown streetscape that is being funded with cash from the tax incremental district downtown was moved from twenty-five into twenty-six. Uh, the cost remained exactly the same. We just did not have the time to do it this year with the staff changes and, and whatnot. And then with the library project downtown, there's going to be some streetscape that we want to incorporate into that. Um, the cost of the PD server replacement that's in the CIP for next year went up, uh, but I spoke with chief steward of it, and we were able to keep the levy obligation the same and fund the rest of it with PD sinking funds. So that is also noted in the CIP. Um, and then the squad car replacement was added in twenty-thirty. You may remember, we, um, upped that policy, so we're, we're replacing those squad cars more frequently than we were. And we did that a couple of years ago. So this keeps us on that schedule and gets those cars where they should be. Um, so those are the major changes. As always, I worked with Ellers, uh, Dave Ferris is actually retiring in September, so Kale Thorpe is our new contact there. I worked with both of them on this. Um, he got their, got their blessing and their same approval. Um, typically, the board decided a few years ago that we really wanted to keep that levy consistent. Uh, in the past, we had a lot of years where we'd have big projects and levy would go way up, and then the next year we would have nothing, and the levy would go way down, and then the next year would go way up. And it was really hard for our residents to effectively budget and plan and not have a surprise every single year they opened a tax bill. So it was, it was our directive, uh, after a lot of discussions a few years ago, to really try to keep that consistent. Um, which is great for two reasons. One is great for the taxpayers and great for the village in terms of planning and budgeting, but also it ensures that we are paying attention to our infrastructure and fixing things as they need to be fixed, rather than putting off, putting off, putting off, and then having to do a bunch in one year. Um, so you'll see a chart on the second page of the memo on page thirty-eight. Um, it shows you, um, how much the levy increases, and then in order to keep that net increase of fifty thousand dollars from year to year, we were able to apply extra debt service fund, which is what we've done in the past. Um, fund twelve is our debt service, um, and any extra funds stay within that fund. They stay in capital projects. So we have a little bit of a nesting there to help cover any overages on these, on these years of levy increase. So for example, next year, the levy's going to increase sixty-two thousand dollars, but we're going to apply twelve thousand dollars of the debt service fund, um, so it keeps that levy change consistent. Um, and then you'll see right now, as we go through the years, that that net levy increase actually decreases right now a little bit, um, as we get to the end of the five years, which obviously can change every year depending on what the board decides to add into CIP, but I feel like we've got a pretty solid CIP plan for the next five years. Um, Ellers also agrees.
So, can you tell, um, how much of the, um, tip? Are we going to dip into at this point? Do we know? The brewery closing, tip closing, you know, the?
Yeah, how?
You know, we have the extra hundred thousand. Do we, do you know offhand how much we are going to use that for projects at all, or nothing at this point?
So I think what you're referring to is how much the, when the brewery tid closes, how much that will add to the levy. Um, when we're still, those aren't final numbers yet, we're still working.
So we're not really, like, we're not going to play with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that we'll be looking really closely at with our, with Ellers next year. It closes next year, um, but it won't get added onto the tax return until we have one.
Okay.
So it'll really, a couple of years.
Just last night, when we talked, you said, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to go in that and be sorry that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, you know, right, a, a good financial plan is you never want to spend all the money before you have it. So I want to be really intentional about when that does come onto the levy to make sure that we aren't, uh, over, overextending ourselves in terms of, of costs.
And because, yes, every year, we had talked about, uh, salaries being part of that, because some are below the medium, median, and we need to get those up, and that would be a, a good way to do it.
Yeah.
Part of the discussion.
Yeah, I, um, I know our, our previous administrator, Lauren, and myself, um, and we've had the conversation with department heads, but I know that's the board directive too, but that is really one of our main focuses is when that, when that tid closes and that money gets put back on the levy, we really do want to take a hard look at wages, and not just wages, but also longevity. Um, what can we do to encourage people to stay, right? Um, we want to get people here, but then we also want to keep them. Um, and if you know anything about hiring in municipal government, especially in specific fields like police, um, electric utility, et cetera, it's hard to get people, um, especially to get people to stay. So that's something I would love to take a closer look at next year, because we have some of that increased levy. But in terms of, uh, the tid closing, uh, you know, tid three is a great donor tid, donor tid to tid four, um, which is our downtown streetscape, um, and that's where that streetscape project you see in the CIP, we're able to fund. And streetscape is really a broad, really a broad thing. It can mean everything from redoing, we have the bricks in the terrace way downtown that really need attention, and that's what this project was intended for. Uh, anything from doing that to putting in new trash receptacles. Um, it's really to add value to the area. So we're working with our advisor, our tip advisors there as well, to come up with a really solid streetscape plan for next year that, of course, will be bringing to the board.
So I just sort of, sort of said it so that the, that we would all be reminded that we have that, but we, we don't want to, I guess, look to the future to grab it all.
And that is separate, so there's, there's two kinds of, of levies, if you will, right? So for the village, we have our operational levy, and then we have our debt service levy. Debt service levy is completely separate. So we, we borrow what we need, um, we have to stay under, if I don't remember the state statute, you have to stay under a certain limit of debt, and then ours is even farther, because we have a village imposed, imposed limit. Um, and this keeps us underneath that village imposed limit. That's completely separate from what that brewery, um, tid closing will add to the operational levy. Um, that's, that's completely different.
And the brewery expansion is not part of a tin, right?
Correct, yep, so that will go right on the tax roll. Mm-hmm. Yep, just obviously depends on when they get done, um, and when that goes on. So, big, big happenings really for the village in terms of, uh, in terms of, you know, properties, taxes, et cetera. Um, and, you know, the thing people, you know, I think we get asked often, like, if, how do my taxes get lower? How can we learn? The way that that tax can go down is by spreading that tax base. Um, and that's why you hear people talk so much about gradual growth. It's really, really important to have gradual growth. Um, I'm not saying we need new subdivisions popping up every year by any means. Um, but the communities around us that you see that are gradually growing are able to increase, they even have figured net new construction number, which allows them to increase that operating levy. That, and that spreads out across a, a greater field than just, you know, what was there, and it adds in all the new properties. So, um, you know, I think growth is a scary word for a lot of people, but it really is a positive thing, especially if it's something gradually.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so we, you know.
Really just looking, yeah, really looking for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six CIP, if that's what the board chooses to do, or obviously if there's any changes. You know, I will say, the CIP is very tight for the next few years in terms of being able to add things. If we really want to add anything, we're going to have to take something out. Um, because we will get pretty close to our self-imposed limit in twenty-twenty-eight. Um, still underneath, but close. Um, and so in order to keep that, if we want to change something up, it's going to have to be in addition in a couple. So the state's seventy-five percent? Uh, yeah, no, so the state has a limit, and then we are seventy-five, seventy-five percent of that. So, yeah, we, and we've done a great job of, of maintaining that, and, um, this plan allows us to continue doing that.
Five percent of your assessed valuation.
Yeah, you're exactly right, Larry, and if you look at.
We can borrow the seventy-five percent of that five.
Yep. And then if you look at the last page, Ellers put together that analysis, and this just kind of shows you in, in a visual form. Um, but if you pay attention to the, um, the green portion there, I don't know if everybody can see me, but that green blob here, there's a blue line right above it.
Yep.
So in twenty-twenty-eight, we're getting pretty close to that blue line. That blue line is our self-imposed limit. Um, the statutory debt limit is the, that we're on one. So we're not close to that. Um, we just inch towards our self-imposed limit in twenty-eight, but still remain underneath. And then, of course, obviously, we have, uh, debt falling off after that point, so we're able to add it.
And the state wants us to contain that seventy-five percent, or if we would ever have a major problem that I need to borrow up against the wall, we got that area to be able to do it, so.
Motion to approve, uh, twenty-twenty-six CIP plan?
Second.
Favor, say hi?
Hi.
Hi. Both, motion carries. Okay. Item six, consideration discussion, library project update.
So I think at the last meeting, we discussed that east, um, foundation. You can see that that is up. The steel also went up for the decking over the staff area. So you can see actually something of a ground, which is a very, very, oh, yeah. Um, on Friday the fifth, the concrete path will go down, so, um, we'll have a street closure that day. And the good news is we got our first disbursement from DOA, so our first disbursement of flexible facility program grant money has come in, so.
Yeah, great.
It's real. Yep.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you, Amy. Uh, item seven, consideration discussion, cemetery update.
We met last Wednesday, the cemetery committee, uh, and our discussion centered around, uh, where basically we had, we have, we're having the same complaints that church had. Uh, trimming is a problem to some people. We, we had put in our budget three times a year, and which, and we try and trim right before a big event, but Memorial Day where people are there, Fourth of July, when they have other things. And then the third one, I'm not exactly.
Labor Day.
Labor Day, okay. But Scott has all the figures and tells me that they're going to sit down and, and look at whether we need to add additional trimming, uh, and if we can get it done with volunteer help, possibly, I don't know. With, but that's a, a thing Kelsey and Scott will discuss. And the other thing, uh, besides the trimming, grass clippings also on my, on memorial stones, because there's more and more of them are flat, so when you mow, it blows on. Um, and, uh, and those are common and insistent, so, but no big, big, nothing really happened that, uh, the church. So, but the other thing is, uh, Lynn Herb found out that she's almost getting as many calls as when she was clerk, and she wants to be retired, so she is resigning as cemetery manager and working with Kelsey on that. So we will be looking for a new manager. We'll also have to discuss if we need to add more than five hours, because I'm sure Lynn's working for it. So that's up for discussion too.
Yeah, so, and I would just add to it, Larry, you had to say, thanks, thanks, Larry, that was great. Um, yeah, I think, you know, when Lynn took a step into this job, it was a little more than what she thought. It would be, a lot of that was just getting the process going, right? Getting the records in order, figuring things out, where things are. And another thing that the cemetery board discussed and approved moving forward with was a plan of survey, so we actually know where the boundaries are, we know where there's utilities running underneath, so we don't sell somebody a plot that then they start digging on that has electrical. So, yeah, so we, the cemetery board approved moving forward with that, and we are, Lynn is still working on that. Um, and Lynn has promised that she's not going to leave us an alert, she'll obviously work with us until we can get somebody into that position. Um, but I, I am hopeful that going forward, that position won't require quite as much book time, at least, in terms of getting those records straight, because Lynn has done such a fabulous job of, of getting them in order. It is still working on it, but, um, really thankful to have her organizational efforts in that. Um, you know, the other thing I'll add about trimming, um, Scott McNatt, our public works director, um, is actually taking that in-house. Uh, so we did purchase a second weed trimmer, um, and public work staff, along with public works LTEs, are going to be taking over the trimming, um, beginning, well, they've already started, and it's going to be something we do next year. So we're going to, we're going to explore how that looks. Um, right now, we, we budgeted to have a contractor trim it three times, um, but we think we can keep it in-house and do it, or I don't know if it'll be quite that, that inexpensive, but at least do it a little bit more often and, and be able to use our LTEs to help do that next summer. Uh, so we are going to attempt that, and still, Worth is still going to be mowing it next summer, we're going to see how that goes. But, um, you know, the thing with the cemetery that, you know, we've had numerous discussions on is it's a new venture for the village. You know, this is something that we got into, and we're really figuring it out as we go, seeing what works, seeing what doesn't. Uh, we appreciate hearing from the public about concerns that they have, um, but also, you know, ask for that understanding that this is a process, and it just takes a little time to, to, to figure out what, what we need to do better and what's going really well, so, um.
Is it inconceivable that the deputy clerk could take that on?
What, the cemetery manager role? Um, I mean, if Lynn was thinking that she got as many calls as she did, when, yeah, then I would say it is. Um, you know, that, I think the board had a lot of discussions when we were taking on the cemetery about what this impact was going to be on current staff. Um, because I feel like every year, current staff here have more and more and more added to their plates. Um, and this was something that we thought, is, you know, the cemetery is not something that's a nine-to-five. The cemetery is a twenty-four. I mean, Lynn would get calls at nights, on the weekends, et cetera. Um, and some of them aren't as urgent, obviously, like somebody's looking for where their family burial is. That's something that can be addressed next day. But if somebody passes away and they need to, they, the family wants to meet you up at the cemetery on a Saturday, you're meeting up at the cemetery on a Saturday. Um, so I think we have some ideas of how to fill that role, um, and we'll explore those. Thankfully, we're obviously approaching the end of the mowing season. Um, we'll have a little off time with that, so we can explore more options on what works best for that role.
And it's been quite a mowing season.
Yeah, and then, you know, that's another thing, right? Like, we've had a ton of rain. I mean, you could almost mow two to three times a week and still have plumps of grass, so, um, we're figuring it out as we go, but I'm fully confident that we have the right people, and the cemetery board's been a great guidance.
And just to give you a kind of a, uh, time commitment, Christina Schneider, who handled it for the church, it takes about sixteen hours to mow and about fifteen to trim. So if you have one person, that's what it takes, that one person. If you have two, then you have half it for each of them, so. I was surprised it wasn't more myself, when I think about.
And I think the other, yeah, we have two cemeteries too, right? They want to be the little cemetery, so a lot of people also forget, we have the little cemetery, but it's the center, so. Um, it is a learning experience, you know, cemetery management, I didn't, I didn't foresee that in my future, but here we are, so. No, we will get the key figured out, and, you know, I'm really optimistic that we'll, we'll have a, be having a much different conversation next year.
Thanks. Okay. Thanks, Larry. Uh, item eleven, EMA steering committee update.
So, the EMA steering committee update. I would say where we're at right now is getting, still trying to get information together. I'm going to start, uh, meeting with Troy and Kelsey ahead of the meetings to try to, um, get a little better acclimated with the information, because there's so much of it, and try to understand the best way to give that information to the, to the group when we're trying to, to work through all this. There's a lot, um, and none of us have done it before. Um, so I think we're in a better spot than we started. We're just, it's, it takes a lot to understand how we're going to progress. Um, other than that, I think we're doing okay.
Okay. Good, a regular meeting, kind?
Yep, once, once a month.
Our next meeting is on Tuesday, September thirtieth. Um, I don't think the time has been finalized yet, but it will be on Tuesday, September thirtieth. And as Jesse said, we're still, still in data collection, and, um, yeah, and this is the first time we've ever, we've ever had a committee like this, so.
Yeah.
You know, I think. Five fifteen. Five fifteen, yeah. You know, I think obviously, we want to, you know, we got the grant funds to study this, and we want to do it the right way. We want to take our time, we want to make sure that we're exploring everything that's presented to the committee, so, uh, yeah, I think, I agree with what Jesse said. I think we're in a better place than where we started. It's, it's a lot of information and have, being able to digest all that, and.
And it's not only the information, it's so, it's, it's how to look at, I think, like you're saying, digesting it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and there's a lot of different people in that room getting acclimated with who they are and what they do, and, and, um, we spent two hours in our last meeting, um, and I would like to say that some of the time was wasted, but every, every minute that we were talking, it's like, it's new things that we're learning on how to, how to properly go through this.
Yeah.
Um, so.
You know, we have a really great group at the table with a lot of different backgrounds and experience, and it's, it's very interesting to hear, you know, one person's perspective versus another person's perspective, and we're talking about the same piece of data, so.
Yep.
Well, thanks for taking it.
Two. I'm going to lube your head. Yeah, it's great. No. Okay, moving on.
Okay, President's report, consideration, because, please, water, water, Billy Ford, meeting streaming. Um, this came up in the meeting, Kelsey had another community, namely Belleville. They have not supplied anything to the paper for years. Um. If there's, like, staff shortages, uh, it creates new records that are not required, but take hours from officers and the, and the staff to, uh, the chief to do, and just trying to make things run more efficient as possible. Jesse, you going to add anything to that?
Sure, so, um, my understanding is, Jeff, how many hours do you spend doing this?
It, uh, the officers do the initial, um, putting it in, and then, uh, every Monday morning, I got to go through it, add stuff. In part-time, other officers didn't do it anywhere from an hour to two hours before I send it out.
Okay.
Um, it just depends how many calls we have that week that we put in there. Um, the other thing I would, would point out is, it does cost the village a lot of overtime, the officers, because when it's their Friday, and they have, you know, calls and the rest, whatever, they're already in overtime. Now they got to go back in and do these news releases and do everything, um, for the news release, and they're submitting fifteen minutes, thirty minutes of overtime.
So, uh, one of the, I was very supportive of, of getting rid of it because of, um, it's sort of like a gossip column, and if somebody makes a mistake, one of us, you know, somebody gets in a car accident, um, Porsche, or anything else happens, uh, everybody in town gets to see it, and it could be your worst day, is, is, uh, in the paper. Uh, it's also costing village money, and, uh, or tax money, I should say, and I don't really see the benefit to it. Um, I understand the paper probably wants that space filled, but, um, at the cost of tax dollars and our police department having to do more work, um, I don't see the benefit. It just seems like something that we're doing for nobodies. And I, anything that we see in that area makes me think we should stop with it. Um.
It seems pretty old-fashioned.
It, it is, right? It's like, Facebook is, is bad, and it's, it's like a paper version of Facebook.
It is.
Um, you, you know, and I spoke to Jeff about this, if there's some, something really big that happens, something that everyone should know about, he's obviously going to have that information, and still the paper can, can get that information. You know, it's not like it's being locked up in a vault, it's just not being broadcasted for everybody that buys a paper to be like, oh, hear what happened to, you know, so-and-so. Uh, so that's, my stand on it was just that I didn't want it there anymore. It doesn't seem to be beneficial in any way, shape, or form.
How did that come apart?
Uh, we met with Belleville, uh, talking about something else, and they had, they had mentioned that they don't do it. Um, and I remember Monticello wasn't really doing it for a while, and our, um, our section in the paper for that was so big. There's so many things, and, uh, I also don't really want to hear about when the officers have to move the squirrel, or if they have to pick up a sign. I don't see why that has to be in the paper. That just seems like, you know, people have actually asked me why.
It's in the paper because I made a deal with the board twenty-seven years ago.
Okay.
And we were only occasionally getting police logs, and didn't really care. But I, and the paper was full, and I ran four weeks at once, and, oh my God, it makes it look like a crime-ridden town, and I'm like, if you get it to me, you promised it to me every week, I will run it as you get it to me every week. If you don't want it in, don't put it in, I don't care. The county does it, you can read the Daily Blog, and according to, it will not surprise anybody, I did some research on it. According to Wisconsin Public Records laws, anyone has a right to the Daily Blog from the police department. And if that's all they want to get, screw it, do that too. We don't really care. Well, I'm not talking to the paper anymore, as y'all know, I'm not in the paper anymore. But it's part of open records, and I have, oh, got a whole shit ton of case law that says that anybody who wants this can get it, and they do not have to pay for the officer's time. They have paper, paper, so you can charge a buck a page or whatever you want to, you, whatever you usually charge for open records. But, and then the other thing that concerns me.
That word's not crushed. If it takes a more time than fifty dollars of anybody's time, then you can.
If it takes them more time than fifty dollars of anybody's time, then you can go.
Then you guys just paid too much.
That's all I'm saying. We gotta look up all this stuff.
And the other thing I wanted to talk about was you're not gonna do Zoom, you don't want to do Zoom meetings anymore either? Transparency is a huge, oh God, government officials love that phrase. They love the word transparency. We want everyone to know what we're doing, but you're considering canceling Zoom meetings? Why?
I wouldn't say the reason why I would consider it and, uh, some of us don't agree on that, like, uh, we, we haven't gotten into that part yet. Obviously, we're in our, our police report, but if someone's sitting and listening uh, to what someone's saying at a meeting and they're actually here, they can, you can choose whatever they actually did here and put it in that way.
Yeah.
You can show up and do it, but you're here.
Yeah.
So if you're sitting.
I'm watching this at home. My name appears up on there and okay, okay, you guys don't know when I've watched it enough and I start swearing and I grabbed, stood right in front of my death, but still it's the same thing. If you want to be open to the whole community, there are people who can't get here and there are people, especially now, I mean, these meetings start at six o'clock now, which is way earlier. I mean, an hour doesn't seem like a lot, but somebody go home with me because my dog didn't get fed before I get down here. It's going to be very upset when I get home.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry for your dog.
Yeah, it should be.
I, I think, uh, we're, are we, sorry, you're saying we're obligated to, uh, do that? Let's finish that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's my point of view on the police blotter. Anybody else?
Well, I would, I was, I do know people who read the police report in detail every week, uh, and, uh, I read it occasionally if, if something happened that I knew somebody, I looked through it, but for me, it's really transparency. It shows all the things the police officers have to put up with and you get some of, Kelsey has gotten that from the public too, so she's, she understands that, but some of the things officers have to put up with and take care of are just, oh my gosh.
Well, and it's.
Why do they call the police?
You talk to people in Belleville, they'll go, oh God, they don't do any.
Well, that's the other thing, yes. People who don't read the report, that's what, what do they do? I hear their siren why every once in a while, but what else do they do? Well, this is what they do. Constantly doing things. So to me, I think it's just, and the paper, the owner of the paper, Geiger, said that he's willing just to take the logs, so you don't have to detail them and everything. If you just give them the logs for the paper, he, he, he's accepting that and the.
And we used, that's what we used to get from New Blair's and what we used to get from the county was a lot. The county decided they didn't wanna give us the log anymore because they would rather decide what's going in rather than me going, look at it. You stop this guy, um, which was being the law where they can say, you know, they'll only say if they think it's him. They like, county likes to use the phrase news work.
Because my question is, what do you think is all in the law?
What was it? Was every stop?
Yeah, but what, what do you think the law details?
What? Who they stopped, why they stopped them?
No.
Okay, maybe not in the law.
A law just lists the case number, Sue. It says traffic stop headline or traffic stop cited, OWL. You're not even gonna understand a lot of that. That's the law.
True.
It doesn't start listing all the people, their age, where they live, everything. I mean, another thing I wanted to add on too is I get numerous phone calls every time. Why is my name going in the paper? If I call and report this, is my name gonna be in the paper? I don't want my business sent there. Whether my business have, you put, they put the hundred blocks and all that. I get numerous calls on that kind of stuff all the time. Even probably from people that used to be on boards and other people too. They don't want it in the.
I have never told you you had.
No, that's true.
So Larry, what you're saying is you feel it's not in there, that people aren't gonna know that chief stewardess and the police officers are doing things that.
Somebody asked them, yeah.
And Jeff, what do you do about that?
We have some other flip side is that we're creating an, an document. When you talked to me and then the administrator talked to me and came to the conclusion to stop it, so we stopped it. And then it was this huge uproar in PMR, you know, why, why we're not doing this post-messenger report?
Oh, God.
So how, how, how can you finish? Because of, we're not doing this anymore. We're not doing this. My biggest thing on this whole thing is that why isn't it been addressed with all the other communities like last night? Because they know we don't turn in three things. We turn in everything, all this stuff, writing tickets, all arresting people and all that. And there's probably reasons other communities aren't.
What think they are?
It might be, some of them might be they're not doing anything and they don't want to. You know, there's so many.
Or some of them may be doing it for the same reasons we made the decision. It was nothing to do with transparency. Uh, it has nothing to do with transparency. This decision was made because we are short-staffed. We are now going to be down two officers in the police department. We are short-staffed. We are always looking for ways to better spend tax dollars. We are stewards of the tax dollars here. And if we are short-staffed and we see something that seems an inefficient use of time.
And money.
And money, then let's find a better way to utilize that. I had, we had a conversation with a neighboring community who said they haven't submitted one in decades without any pushback. We had the conversation with Chief Sturdivan and it seemed to make a lot of sense. The reasons we did this, I think, are getting misconstrued here. The reasons we did this are exactly what Chief Sturdivan said. It was to be more efficient, to better use staff time and to better use taxpayer dollars. Uh, the records are still available, so you're absolutely right. They are all records and you can file an open record request and get them. But when we create the police blotter news release, if you will, what you see in the paper, that is creating a whole new record that is not required by law, that we then have to maintain, keep, et cetera, et cetera. And we're, we're using staff time to create it and then we're sending it out to the news at no cost. Uh, that was the, the reasoning behind this. It had nothing to do with transparency, absolutely nothing.
The only other thing I wanna do is I reach out to the chief. They don't do it. I reached out to Albany. Albany doesn't do it.
Monroe does.
And double does it. And I'm sorry, you don't wing off staffing, how many officers and how much staff does Monroe have? How much staff and officers does County Sheriff's Department have?
A lot more.
And right, so they have people they can just assign to it. I have a secretary that I can't assign this to her. She's here for hours. We gotta get reports processed and get reports out of here and other open records for the DA's office or district attorney. The other thing I wanna point out, I also created a report, once a month. Two, it's the monthly report that's in the public safety and it has categories, you know, tickets and everything. We write that like a lot of.
That goes to every board meeting at every single month. It is in a packet. It is in a packet online. You could, you could go on our website tonight and see every single monthly police report for the last few years.
It just doesn't break it down and say Suzie Smith, yeah, the ticket for running the cop sign or the police picked up a squirrel in the two hundred block.
What I don't like about the, the police blotter is, first of all, the workflow and second of all, defamation. I mean, I.
I did the phone calls from the people after they get cleared in court or whatever, or they did just master a clean bar. Now are you gonna put something in the paper? Because I wasn't convicted, even though it says in there you're innocent.
You're having a bad day and you, whatever, you know, and, um, wouldn't that suffice enough that Jeff's, uh?
It's not available until you have three years. It is on a consent agenda of once a month for the village board and it's on the public works and safety when we have that meeting every month. Um, it's on that agenda too, but it is always in a included in a board packet. It is always part of the consent agenda and it's always posted online in the packet. And I have been here since twenty-two. That report has been in those packets.
And we are short-staffed. I'd hate to waste taxpayer dollars having you type up a summary of incidents that are already available to them.
And half the time it's on social media.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Right. And the county scanner and everybody's writing all their nasty comments and everything. And they post this stuff all over and then people are slamming us too. So there's pros and cons either way. I see pros and cons for, for it all, but then when I was talked to and it came to the conclusion, you know, let's just be done with it. I mean, when I sent out the email to my staff, that it was all, I am so happy because it's so tightens to me that like public rifle home, I gotta do all this and, and put all this in there. And then if it's their Friday, I'm getting overtime slips.
I could see if we had a full staff, but we don't and, and with a shortened staff, uh, your time should be with the public and not be. But they haven't been full staffing for a long time, fifteen years, something like that. All I see is cha-ching.
I get, and the other thing is what, what is the big thing with, uh, the, the post-messenger recorder when they talk to Kelsey? What, what is the main reason you really want? I mean, what is the main reason?
First thing everybody reads.
Exactly. So we're creating documents to slam people some more.
It goes police report, sheriff's report, obituaries, and then whatever, pre-pictures on the front page. And that's the order and it's been the order for, oh God, I have no idea how many years, but.
I guess my next question is Sue, you're now with the PMR, so what, what's your interest in all of it?
I have been assisting with the board six years.
Ah. Okay, I was wondering why. I thought, I assumed you were gonna be on our side because I thought.
It's my Monday morning to see that.
You know, the other thing I will add just in this conversation in terms of village staff is I can speak since, since I've been here, village staff has always, always been willing to talk with our, I've had so many conversations with Sue. Um, always willing. I mean, we do believe in transparency, Sue. We have hard conversations.
All of a sudden this is popping up. I mean, meetings have, times have changed to less convenient times for the public and.
I would argue that.
It's not great. It's public, it's so, it's.
Well, and I would also say that seven P M. on Tuesdays is not convenient for a lot of people in the public too. So I think either way, I think we, we could change this to what's most convenient for everybody in this room and there'd be a whole room of people in another room that say that's the.
Now I'm gonna cancel Zoom too.
We didn't get to that point.
Another thing I, I wanted to point out too is when we do create this public document and that gets blasted in the papers and now it goes on social media and everything, everybody's gonna see that and they have seen it. It creates even more open records because now they see Suzie Smith just got arrested for this. Now I get the Wisconsin Patrol and I get YouTube, everybody that makes money off of what we do. Watch all the body camera, the squad video, everything, and then I got to now produce all that because they saw it on social media or on the paper because it's a, let me kind of switch the searchable items. I know, and I get tons of open records because they see it. Now that if it's not on there, that's gonna alleviate a lot of that.
Okay, so that's, that's a lot of information. Why don't we just, uh, bring it to a vote? Would you do that?
Yeah, you can go on the vote rule.
Okay, so.
Jesse, just so you know, you can have two separate motions for this. I know there are two different topics here.
Well, I was gonna do the.
Yeah, I just want to.
Okay, so I motion to end the police blotter.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in the second and the put by the police blotter, you mean you must take put, put, correct.
But they are, not just what they put in the post. This, what they're talking about is the, the record that is specifically created. It's a synopsis of cause that is then sent to news media. The post messenger is just one of the news media outlets that, that receives it.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't mean that the records are going away, but it's still put in open records.
Yeah.
And to piggyback on what Jeff said, if there's something major that requires, I shouldn't say required, but he was gonna put that in the paper regardless of.
Right.
If it's a major issue.
Big things, yeah, like, let's say, you know, one fourteen-second screen, run to the ground. Okay, I'll just run the other kind. I mean, I'm gonna do a news release on it. We get like a pit defense or something greater, OWI, we take them to jail. We're gonna do that, just like you see in the, the papers now or you see on the news. They do all that. I have a hot lane that it goes up everywhere. Well, for the war, yeah, that's good to see. Yeah, right.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Okay, I'm undecided.
Okay, uh, propose motion carries. Okay, village board meeting streaming.
Yeah, so this was on the agenda because it was requested by board members to be on the agenda, so.
Okay, so my part in this is just, um, if we're creating the streaming service, it, it's great to share information. It's just if someone's gonna sit and listen and maybe they're not gonna pay attention all the way and use whatever they may hear or may not hear. It's not a, it's not an actual record. People have come to us and not wanted to speak at certain meetings because they don't want them to, they don't want what they're saying to be taken out of context. Um, I'm not saying that that is a hundred percent.
People have said this to you?
Yeah. Uh, so that doesn't mean I'm telling anybody else what to do. I'm just saying it's, it's a thing, so.
Ready? Okay, I think transparency in government is really, 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 really important.
Yeah.
Um, I can't put enough relief on that and I think of having Zoom so that anybody can access government meetings. And no, we don't get a lot of people who do it, but it's available to them. Um, and you know, it seems great right now because we all know each other. We all like each other, agree whatever, but like you can all think of people who, if they were on this board, you would wanna know what they wrote to. You would wanna know what thinking was, what the decision-making process was. And if we get rid of that now, I think we're just shooting ourselves in the foot.
Right.
It would look horrible.
I, I.
Yeah.
Well, I would add some just historical information on this. Obviously, when COVID, prior to COVID, we did not stream meetings. COVID hit, changed the landscape of a lot of this, right? So we were meeting via Zoom because that was the safest way to do it. Uh, we, we carried that link over, um, after COVID as an accommodation to residents that may not be able to attend the meeting in person.
Right.
It truly was meant specifically for that, to be an accommodation for our residents that couldn't get here, that had other, you know, had to be somewhere else, that they could, they could attend. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I also have been approached, as Jesse said, from people that don't feel comfortable coming to the meetings and speaking because they feel if they've been misquoted or misconstrued or et cetera. Um, I think it's a balancing act, Sue, like you talked about, you know, convenience and meeting times. Sometimes they're gonna be really convenient for a group of people and other times they're not gonna be. I think it's the same with this.
Well.
Well, it's the same as posting on, on Facebook and people who post don't have the emotion and, and those who get misconstrued as well. It's the way it is now, but I think you have to have that door open. I, I mean, it's the way of the world. It's, Zoom is what's, how people meet.
You know what I will say is.
Went through the same thing and they're, they're recording all of them now too, so people can watch them at, when they have time. And also to clarify, if somebody says, no, this didn't happen, but we've got the proof.
I would say recording and streaming are two different.
Yes.
So do they, do they do Zoom or do they just record?
That's a good question.
So what I will say is there's.
They do report them all and post them.
Sure. There are communities around us that do it both ways. Belleville down the road, streams via Teams. Monticello down the road does not. Um, having live meetings via Zoom or another platform is not required. Um, you are required to have a public open meeting, um, at a posted address and location within the municipality. Um, so it's not a requirement, um, but like I said, it was something that was meant to be an accommodation for residents that couldn't attend the meetings in person.
Yeah.
Um, but it is not a legal requirement, which I think is important. We've always, at least in recent history, recorded the meetings. I don't know if some of you remember, we used to have a cam porter, uh, which wasn't super reliable. Um, no, trust me. Um, so we've gone away from that. Zoom has been great in that aspect because it allows us to record as we're meeting and easily be able to upload. Um, so require, I would say, recording and live streaming are two very different things.
So this is all about storage, keeping it online?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I guess my, my thought when I was approached by adding this to the agenda was that it was specifically about live streaming. It wasn't about recording.
Right.
I, I, as the former clerk, current administrator, I agree that having the, the village board meetings recorded is very helpful. Um, just.
So all of these meetings are available online?
They will at some point. I'm once again, short-staffed, Sue, so when I can get to it and get them posted, I do. Uh, but we do record them every now and then, Zoom. That's the other thing that I think is important to point out. If you are relying on Zoom to attend these meetings all the time, just know that I'm at the mercy of technology, right? So I'm at the mercy of our internet working. I'm at the mercy of Zoom working. We just had a meeting this past week, um, the EMS steering committee, where we had some Zoom issues. So we do it as a, as a courtesy, as an accommodation, um, but I would say if you absolutely wanna make sure you hear everything that is said, you are here in person. You are here in person, um.
So what we're, I guess I'm confused, what we're discussing here is having the option to attend the meeting via Zoom. But not record and store it, is that what?
We would, they're not talking about recording.
Yeah, all we're talking.
That is probably gonna happen. Right. Based on technology availability, this is just according to Zoom with two others. But yes, Sue, to answer your question there, stored on our YouTube page, um, I, they're not up to date, I'll be perfectly honest, I wish it was stacked. So posting videos on YouTube is is on the list, it's just not on the top of the list, um, but we do record them. It's a village policy that record village board meetings.
Okay, so.
But we can.
Go ahead.
But we can still, if somebody needs to attend our meeting, they can Zoom me, all right?
Well, currently, since anybody that wants to Zoom in, I mean, that's all, that's kind of an open-ended discussion for the board to have. Um, it wasn't anything to do with recording, it was more in the sense of are we live streaming, quote unquote, the meetings? Um, that's up to the.
Technical illiteracy, so Zooming and streaming are two separate things.
No, Zoom's a platform to fly, to livestream, so, uh, you could use, so Belleville, for example.
Zoupy, I just, I pictured you in a car.
Zoom is just a platform that allows us to livestream the meetings. You could do the same thing on Microsoft Teams, which is what, which is what Belleville uses. Um, and like I said, Monticello doesn't stream at all, um, that doesn't mean they don't record, they just don't livestream their meetings. And the school district may be the same, they may record them, but they may not livestream. State statute does not require you to livestream, it requires you to hold a public meeting of the posted address on an agenda, et cetera, et cetera.
What I'm getting at is, say, we were gonna have a meeting, somebody from Belleville's wanted to attend, they could still.
Yeah, we, and the, prior to us Zooming, we would have people call in, was the the old way of doing it, right, via phone. Um, or like if you remember Skype, that was something people would do, if it was a, if it was a presentation for the board. From a company that was hours away, they would do that prior to happening, the the Zoom link was not added for that reason. Because those people, if necessary, were already able to get in one way or another in terms of virtual access. The Zoom link was added to be an accommodation for residents that could not make the meeting otherwise, that is why it was added.
Okay. Anybody else? So I'm not looking to end them right now. So is anybody? I should, I I just, I don't wanna look like trying to close the door on information, I don't like that. Um, I don't want people misquoted, obviously, that's not good, we don't want that. Right, can't want people to be worried about speaking at a meeting. Um, so I'm ready to move on, if anybody else.
Okay.
So just to be clear, if we take no action, that just means things will stay as they are.
Right.
Yep.
So no action taken on that?
No action.
All right.
Okay. Close session.
We need a motion, second, I'm gonna talk to you.
Oh, I'm motioning to go to close sessions.
Roll call, Becca?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Uh, John? Sorry, John, did I, you say, oh, sorry, uh, Larry?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yeah.
Roger?
Yes.
Yep.
Pop up that sign, lock the door, let me.